Welcome everyone to the regular council meeting for Tuesday, July 18th, 2023. May I have the roll call, please?
Vice Mayor Sandu, Councilmember Papino, Councilmember Farmer.
Here.
Councilmember Lozano.
Here.
Mayor Vandenberg.
Here.
Next we will have the silent player followed by the flag salute. If you'd please join me. Salute, pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everyone. Madam Clerk, may you read the replay statement, please?
This meeting of the Galt City Council will be cable cast on Metro Cable 14, the local government affairs channel, on the Comcast Consolidated Communications and AT&amp;T U-verse Cable Systems. The meeting is closed captioned and webcast at metro14live.zaccounty.gov. Today's meeting replaced Friday, July 21st at 9:00 a.m. and Saturday, July 22nd at 9:00 a.m. This meeting can also be viewed at youtube.com/MetroCable14.
Thank you. Next is Agenda Approvals and/or Deletions. Does the council have anything? Seeing none, we'll move on to presentations. The first subject is Galt Community of Character Coalition in Respect.
Tonight, we are honoring the longstanding, selfless, incredible volunteers of the Sunshine Food Pantry of Galt. We are recognizing them with the 2023 Respect Award from the Galt Community of Character Coalition. When the doors open to people in need of food here in Galt, these volunteers greet everyone with a smile, a welcome, a glad to see you. These 37 volunteers are true role models of respect. And I'd like now to read the nomination narrative that was written. 14 years ago, a teacher saw hungry children in her classroom and asked if local churches might help. The Sunshine Food Pantry was born with the goal to meet the needs of Galt elementary students, 62% of whom are from socio-economically disadvantaged homes. Since then, housed in the Galt United Methodist Church Social Hall, the Food Pantry's tireless volunteers have worked to provide food, encouragement, and human kindness for increasing numbers of households in which working adults cannot make ends meet and senior citizens cannot stretch their social security to include rent, medicine, and food. Respect is at the heart of all we do at the Sunshine Food Pantry. Respect for the people who come to us for help, respect for all our volunteers who come from many backgrounds, and respect for the environment in the way that we carefully sort recycling and food waste. The Sunshine Food Pantry has a core group of 37 volunteers who spend countless hours picking up food from our local grocery stores, receiving deliveries from the Sacramento Food Bank and the LDS Bishop Storehouse, sorting, shelving, and inventorying all the foods, staffing our twice-monthly public giveaways, and delivering food weekly to our senior living communities here in Galt. We respect the small-town values of Galt, where everyone is needed and valued and helped when times are tough. We are teaching respect for hard work and devotion to community, to the young people who volunteer with us on occasion from the high schools, Rotary, Interact Club, and Scouts. Volunteers of the Sunshine Food Pantry demonstrate over and over that they are true role models of respect. As a most valued and longstanding Sunshine Food Pantry volunteer who demonstrates respect so continuously and generously, you are hereby selected by the Galt Community of Character Coalition as a recipient of the 2023 Galt Respect Award. And I'd like now to read the names of those people. And first I will call up Fay Gaines, who nominated everybody here, the volunteers. And Fay is the Director/CEO of the Sunshine Food Pantry of Galt. We're going to call from two lists, Fay. So Gail will have a list and you'll have a list. And we recognize that not everybody's here tonight. We have about 25 of these incredible volunteers that are here tonight. All right, so first up, I'm calling alphabetically by first name. Is Betty Welch, if Betty's here? And we'll hold any applause until later. And if you don't mind, could we gather in the front just for one brief picture?
Absolutely.
Okay, great, okay. And next is Betty Galler.
Brenda.
Sorry, Brenda Galler. And then right here. And then Bronson Semenek. And Candy Marfelka. Okay, and Colleen Hurley. Deborah Crane. Dez Flowers. Here's Dez. Douglas Gibson. Earl Laurentz. Ed Delgado. Ernie Placencia. Fay Gaines. Freddie Delgado. Grace Molson. Hazel Hicks. Jean Nelson. Jim Parish. Jody Gaines. John Hicks. Jose Diaz. Katie Ronaine. Linda Halsey. Linda Seashore. Marcy Seibel. Marilyn Davini. Mark King. Mark Sousa. Mark Stockman. Pearl Silva. Robert Seibel. Rod Semenek. Sandy Bernadum. Sharon Drake. Sharon Hebine. Stella Lopez. Tom Halsey. Tom Mastrati. Sorry, Tony. Yikes. All right, Galt, here they are, these incredible volunteers of the Sunshine Food Pantry.
Our timer is once again on the grid, so.
Say something before they leave.
Hey, folks. Councilman Farmer would like to say a few words.
Just before a lot of you take off, just want to say thanks to the community coalition for honoring those. But if anybody in this town that realizes what, doesn't realize what a volunteer organization, what impact they have, they could see here tonight. I mean, we had like, what, probably an eighth of the population of Galt up here this morning. So, but a lot of people may not realize that the Sunshine Pantry exists, or maybe what they do. And that, I think, is a testament of what you guys do because you make such an impact in the community, but yet some people don't even know you're there because you're not doing it for gratification. You're doing it because you care. So many familiar faces up here that I see, and a lot of you are, you know, volunteer with other organizations too, so you're involved in multi-levels. But no one will realize the impact you guys have until you're not there. So, thank you for all you do, we appreciate it.
I'd also like to thank the Sunshine Food Pantry for all of what Councilman Farmer said, but in addition to that, your partnership with other organizations in the community, your willingness to open your arms up and let Rotary come in and participate and be a part of the holiday box giveaways and things like that. And thank you to Fay for all you do, you're the cornerstone there, and we all know that. So, thank you so much. On behalf of the entire city council, including the two members that are not here, I am absolutely positive they agree with everything these fine gentlemen just said. And so, behalf of the city council and the city, thank you so much for taking care of so many people every day, 365 days a year. It is very wonderful and it's very much appreciated. Thank you. And with that, we move to presentations for the Youth Commission, subject Mentor Appointments and Administering the Oath of Office.
All right, so this is, the recommendation is to accept the student member appointment selected by the Galt Youth Commission Adult Mentors and administer the oath of office. Per Galt Municipal Code, Section 2.85.050, student member shall be interviewed by the adult members of the commission. Each student member shall be submitted for acceptance by the city council and shall serve for a two-year term commencing on June 1, ending on May 31st. This year, there were five student member vacancies. And the five applicants chosen by the adult mentors are Nav Karen Sandu, Annalise Bowman, Gabriel Akers. Gabriel, I apologize. Alexis Ortega, and Joshua Kohlers. This will need a motion to approve, and once approved, we will administer the oath of office.
Say it again, please, I'm sorry, it was often different thought about stuff. We need a motion to approve in a second?
Yes.
Okay, I so moved, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Lozano.
Councilmember Farmer?
Yes.
Councilmember Lozano?
Aye.
Mayor Vandenberg?
Aye. Motion passes three to nothing.
So if you want to come up to the front, right here?
If there are family members wanting to take photos, you don't have to do it from the back row. You can come up and take photos.
Okay, so what you're going to do is raise your right hand and repeat after me. I instate your names.
I, Nav Karen.
I do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and defend.
That I will support and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies foreign and domestic.
Against all enemy foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
To the Constitution of the United States.
To the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
That I take this obligation freely.
That I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation.
Without any mental reservation.
Of purpose of revision.
Or purpose of revision.
And during such time.
And during such time.
As I am a student member.
As I am a student member.
Of the Galt Youth Commission. I will faithfully discharge the duties. Of the position of commission member.
To the best of my ability.
Congratulations.
Yeah, I just want to say, you guys didn't expect to have to promise to defend the Constitution tonight, did you? Thank you for those two plies, this is very important. Thank you for wanting to serve your city. Thank you to the ones in the back who are continuing on the commission. I know a lot of you, and Josh. And so, I just want to say thank you and look forward to seeing what you guys, what impact you guys have in the community.
Mr. Lozano?
Yeah, thanks for your service, and I'm sure you'll have a great time. You've got great mentors that will help guide you. But this is your city also, and your input is very important for us in making decisions. So, thank you for your service.
Thank you very much, and good luck.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, also address the commission. As you all know, I meet with you all usually right at your first or second meeting. The current members have heard this from me before, but the new members, I'll just let you know now. This city will be in your hands in somewhere between 10 to 15 years. So, the dialogue we have with you now informs what that city looks like or what we look like in that time span. So, we encourage you to be creative. We encourage you to be honest about what and where you want your city to go, and we'll see what we can do to tee those things up for you, okay? But congratulations to you all.
And the last, sorry, the last presentation will be Galt Youth Commission Annual Report to the City Council.
Good evening, my name is Alexa Merloquevez, and I'm joined by Josh Kohlers tonight. And as members of the Galt Youth Commission, we are very excited to be presenting to the city council tonight.
All right, thank you, council. This year was a great year for the commission. We had a lot of people, we had luckily an abundance of people to be able to take on the various roles that were able to make us successful and productive this year. Those being, Jasane Corr was our chair, Ms. Genevieve Vakers as vice chair, Karina Lallian as our secretary, Lauren Carone as our treasurer, Alexis Gold as our publicity chair, Ms. Alexa Merloquevez as our fundraising chair, Kason Jones as our sergeant of arms, yours truly as council liaison. And then we had our two ancillary members, Ms. Alexia Bullerhan and Mr. Mikey Bricksy.
The purpose of the Galt Youth Commission is outlined in our ordinance, and in order for us to fully fulfill our goals, we strive to work with the city, organizations, and individuals on issues that focus on teens and youth in our city. And simultaneously, we also like to work on our professional, personal, professional skills. So, the Adopting a Street project is something that we started a few years ago in partnership with the Beautification Committee. And it goes to promote cleanliness among our city and our streets. And we adopted Lincoln Way, and we continue to work on cleaning Lincoln Way this year as well. But really, wherever our help was needed, that's where we went. And this year, just like any other years, we saw a variety of ages ranging from toddlers to seniors coming out to help, so we really appreciated that. And of course, like other past years, we were often treated afterwards by nearby organizations or committee members, which we deeply appreciated. And this year, we worked on making sure that we had more participation per event, so that was great.
One of the projects that we also continued this year from last year, I had the privilege of heading up again, was our fashion show project for the High School Career Fair. And we took this project on to help the youth of our city realize the necessity and the importance of professional attire in gaining success for a job interview. So, we got together with the Interact Club, and we got some members from them to be able to be our models. But the planning and organization was done solely by us on the commission. This year, we had a wonderful turnout, as you can see from the pictures. We put on a great show for the community. Learning from last year, we decided to plan a couple more extra months in advance, about two months more from last year, which gave us plenty of time and gave us the resources necessary to be able to pull this off. One thing we're still struggling to find a solution for is commitment from student models. For both years now, we've had students sign up at the beginning, and then whether they lose interest or whether they have conflicting commitments, they haven't been there for the final product. So, we're still working on that, but overall, it's been a very successful project.
This year, we participated in a lot of community events. At the Covington Memorial Run, we partnered with the Galt Herald to pass out coloring books to kids during the parade. At National Night Out, we rode with the Parks and Rec van. And at the Halloween movie night, we had a lot of fun passing out candy to the kids from our booth.
Some other community events that we had the privilege of partaking in were the lighting of the night parade, where we went along the parade route and handed out candy to kids in the pouring rain. It was an excellent event despite that. And for the extravaganza event, we set up a booth, and we had an abundance of prizes donated by lots of local organizations that we raffled off to be able to fundraise for our commission so we can continue to do these events. We actually raised a lot more money from last year, so that was a significant improvement. Then that same night, a handful of us were able to volunteer for the A through Z Foundation Dinner as waiters to honor our veterans. And we formed a great relationship with that organization now. The Rotary Club had a Taco de Meyer Dinner in May, which we were also able to help in set up and clean up for that event. And I unfortunately was not able to be there, but I heard that we did a great job. And one thing we haven't mentioned on here on this slide, we forgot to put it. During Christmas, we gathered blankets and socks from the community, and we took them to the Dicora Care Home for all the patients there. And we were able to bring them a little bit of Christmas cheer, and it was a wonderful time. Another thing that we were able to do this year, because as important as community relationships are, building those team connections are also as vital. So, for our retreat from last year, we went to Big Trees, Calaveras, and we took a hike, and we just sort of hung out to be able to build those connections with the incoming commissioners that have now blossomed into the community's success we've seen in the past year. We then did an escape room, which Mayor Vandenberg joined us, and we were able to, you know, to use our problem-solving skills and rack our brains together to be able to figure out our strengths and our weaknesses together so that we could apply that to the coming year. And then finally, we were able to participate in Coffee with a Cop, where we all got together to socialize with local law enforcement and local city officials to be able to build those connections with each other and with those officials.
So, as you may know, we offer scholarships to Liberty Ranch and Galt High School students every year. And this year, due to our fundraising efforts, we were able to increase our amount from 250 per scholarship to 500 per scholarship. So, we actually have one of the winners here today. Congratulations to Genevieve Vakers and Riley Himannover. Thanks so much for applying, and we wish you all the best in your future.
Now, through this year, we've been able to gain some of the skills you've seen on screen, as well as many, many others. But these life skills of leadership, learning your personal strength, team-building, responsibility are very invaluable skills going into a world like today's in the professional job market. And being able to be on the commission has taught us so much throughout this year. We've had a great time learning them, and we've had a great time being able to explore those traits within ourselves and building them within each other. We'd like to thank the city of Galt for allowing us to be on this commission. It's a truly invaluable experience. I would like to thank Mr. Vandenberg for being our city council representative on the commission and being able to share that knowledge and expertise with us. We'd like to thank our adult mentors, Ms. Paige Lamson, Ms. Jessica Gerzen, and Mr. Alan King, as well as the community organizations and donors who were able to volunteer their time and donate generous amounts of prizes for our extravaganza fundraiser, those being the Beautification Committee, the A through Z Foundation, Brewster Squeeze Burger, Coffee Shop Bakery, Poppa's and Wings, Beauty Farm, La Hime, Cow Waste, and much, much more that we were not able to fill on the slide. But nevertheless, we appreciate their support so much, and we don't want them to go unnoticed.
So now, we just wanted to take a little bit of time to congratulate our outgoing and incoming commissioners. Our outgoing were Genevieve Vakers, Lauren Carone, Alexis Gold, and Jasane Corr. Genevieve provided a lot of insight. She was a veteran for four years, and she provided, contributed a lot of strong communication skills to the group. Lauren restarted our tradition of the extravaganza raffle. Alexis was able to keep us on track all the time. And Jasane was able to, not run, but guide us through this year with fun and responsibility on her mind. And of course, I wanted to congratulate all the incoming commissioners that were sworn in today. We have Annalise Bowman, Nav Karen, yeah, Nav Karen Sandu. Just making sure. And Alexis Ortega. So, congrats, guys, and we cannot wait to see what you guys will do for the Galt Youth Commission. So, congrats, guys, and we cannot wait to see what you guys will do for the Galt Youth Commission. And of course, we have a returning who was also re-sworn in today, Joshua Kohlers, Alexis Merloquevas, Alexia Bulehan, Mikey Bricksy, Karina Lallian, and Kason Jones. So, thank you very much. Are there any questions?
Council members?
Not really question, just again, thank you. Fond memories of my tenure on the, the Youth Commission, some of those things you mentioned I remember well. And thank you to Mayor Vandenberg for taking the baton on that. And a big thanks to the adult mentors too, you know, some of these, it's hard to get adult mentors sometimes. People just have busy lives and they, they want to help, but then they just don't. And so, big props to those of you for stepping up and taking time from your lives to mentor these kids and guide them. So, thank you all. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you all. So, I just had one question. When you did that escape room, were you able to escape under an hour?
Yes, we actually escaped with 17 minutes to spare.
Oh, my goodness.
Very good.
They're a lot smarter than me. And when, when the city manager challenges them to the future, believe me, they're ready.
That's awesome. Good job.
Thank you.
I, I have just one question. For the, for the veterans, what do you think the most important aspects of being on the Youth Commission you could pass on to the becomers?
I've been here the longest, for you're a veteran. One thing that I would pass along is make sure that you, I wish I could look at them, but, make sure that you really organize your time and make sure that you organize time with everyone equally. Because I have experienced a lot of times where I signed up for a lot of things, but wasn't really able to give my full potential to that project just because I signed up for everything else. So, I would say pick something that you truly want to work on because there are others who are perfectly capable to work on a different project that you would want to work on. But just make sure that you focus on something so that all of your potential is put in and it comes out perfectly, as perfect as it can be.
That actually makes a lot of sense. It's, it's wise to hold back in some areas so that you can put your best foot forward in the ones that you do work on. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Paige, you want to say something or?
Well, I want to thank Lorenzo. There was a time when I was the only mentor, so Lorenzo stepped in to be a mentor in large. So, Sean and Lorenzo and I did that. But I want, I've been very busy. I've been going through a few things. That presentation did not touch any adult hands. The kids did that all on their own and it was so professional, just want to say that.
Thank you, Paige. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Good luck. Next is public comment. Madam Clerk?
Under Government Code Section 54954.3, members of the public may address the City Council on non-agenda items. The public comments section is for the City Council to receive comments. Except for brief responses to questions, no discussion or action may be taken on any item that is not listed on the agenda. Please limit comments to a maximum of five minutes. Consistent with the City Council procedural guidelines, the mayor reserves the right to shorten the time limit for speakers to ensure the efficient and timely completion of all city business on the agenda. Public comments may also be submitted as noted above via the options listed on the first page of the agenda. We have one public comment and I will be timing it from my phone because our clock is...
Yeah, I saw it malfunction earlier, so, thank you.
Elizabeth McDaniel.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Elizabeth McDaniel and I'm a resident here in the City of Galt. I'd like to speak a little bit on the Galt Place apartment complex for seniors. I basically just have one question in particular, and that is what are you really going to do? I've had a meeting with Mr. Heinz. I, yet, I would like to have a meeting with the Chief of Police as well regarding multiple unauthorized entries, missing items, namely, I've had a birth certificate that is missing. I've had my federal retirement information that's missing. I've had items out of my apartment either missing or swiped out. In particular, I have one with me that I had shared during my, making a complete, a complaint with the police department. I have a DVD player that is not mine, that was in my apartment. And it probably has fingerprints on it and I'd like to have that looked at. In addition to that, I have other items in my apartment that I've requested that fingerprinting be done by the police department. I'd like to have an investigation done as well. In addition to that, the meeting that was had, I believe it was in May, with the tenants and the management company, sadly to report, nothing has changed. In fact, it has seemed worse. A lot of the tenants are extremely unhappy. They're being harassed. They're still experiencing these Gestapo tactics whereas they're coming in and out of your apartment at any given time they choose. Namely, I will say, on July 3rd, I had to file my second police report, complaint because the, I was not at home and the manager alleged that she was doing a wellness check at 3:00 in the afternoon. And the only way that I would have known that, I, I, I found out about it was because, not because she admitted it, it was because I had set a booby trap and I knew someone had come into my apartment. And so, I was talking with a neighbor and she heard me, she overheard me. And she stepped back and said, "Oh, I came in your apartment." I said, "Oh, really? Why? Why would you come into my apartment?" You know? "Oh, well, you know, I can do that. I can do a wellness check. Someone said they heard you screaming." I'm like, "Yeah, right, 3:00 in the afternoon. I can understand, you know, 3:00 AM, 2:00 AM." I mean, everyone's moving around commotion and so on and so forth, things to happen during their day. And so, I said, "Well, why was there no note on my door that you entered my apartment? Because I already knew you came in here because I set a booby trap for you." And in fact, she broke one of my personal items. They need to pay for it. And so, she, her response was, "Well, I have some written stuff in my, in the files, I guess, where you can do a wellness check." Newsflash, she should have did a wellness check, probably about, concerning the, the five to six people that have already died in the apartment you guys didn't really even care about. But in addition to that, I just want you all to look into this matter, you know, sincerely look into this matter. A lot of the tenants are not happy there. I wish I could have been with the Sunsign Group. I'm 62 years old. I could be doing something else with my time than trying to fight now to try to recover my identity and find out where, what happened to properties and stuff. And just basically, I feel like the love of money is the root of all evil because they don't care about our well-being there. Their tactics are tacky. They're, like I said before, in a Gestapo manner. And it's causing an extremely hostile environment there. The tenants report a lot of things. Molded toilets, that's the one I have. In addition to molded building, molded, molding all around the building. And I just really want to know what the city is going to do about it, specifically Mr. Heinz, because this is not right for people to live in this type of condition. So, pretty much, I, I didn't write anything down. I was really tired today, frustrated because I got another note on my door. "Oh, we want to come in and make some repairs." Yeah, I think it was February when I said I will withhold my rent if you do not get this molded toilet out of my apartment. And yet, they still have not specified which repairs they want to make on tomorrow. Again, wanting to, you know, just hold up my time. And I don't know how it's going to go tomorrow morning. I was told by one of the officers I could do a civil standby because there, the, the trust level is not there and it's, it's, it's a bit touchy, you know? So, I, I would prefer, okay, is that it?
No, you keep going. If you have more to say, you keep on going.
You're going to make me cry saying that because it's really bad. I, I'm just like so, so, so frustrated, you know? And if you don't comply to all of this, it's craziness. It's like we are seniors here in this community. Like I said, I could be doing something different than sitting up here, coming before the council, as some of my other, the residents have come before you all. I mean, it's really bad. I, I could suggest maybe the, the city manager, maybe the police department, you guys can come together with us and have some type of meeting or something because things are getting really bad. I've heard a lot of stories and they were not nice of some of the things people are, you know, they're angry.
Yep. I've, I've received cold calls from people that, with similar concerns. So, it is noted, I have asked about it, the city is not in the best position to do, I mean, some of the things they complained about are like raising a rent are legal. I can't get into a back and forth with you.
Yeah, I know. It's just the mold, that's, I've withheld my rent. I'm not going to pay them, period. You, you get the toilet out and then maybe we can negotiate because at the end of the day, I've been living in an inhabitable situation. I'm a senior, but I have one of those chair potties that I, I use. And you know, I've expressed my concerns to them. It just goes on deaf ear. So, you know?
I'm sure the city manager would be happy to talk to you again.
Yeah, I'd like to have another meeting with you. Yeah, it was his recommendation that I even would go to the tenants' meeting on the day that I did, but because I wasn't even going to go because I didn't, I was like, "Yeah, right. What is that going to do?" And so, I would love that, sir.
Thank, thank you for your comments. I, we do appreciate it.
Okay, thank you very much.
With that, we will, reports by City Council members on regional boards, commissions, and/or committees. Councilman Farmer.
I actually don't have anything official to report, so, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Councilman Lozano?
The only thing I have is I attended the Final Revenue and Taxation Policy Committee Meeting for the California League of Cities. And we put forward unanimously a couple of items to go to the general meeting in regards to, one of them's in regards to sales tax sharing agreements. And all of this information's on the Cal Cities website, so if you want to check it out, it's, it'll be on there. And then the other thing is reconciliation of existing policy and guiding principles to reflect definition of equitable e-commerce sales tax distribution. And, and essentially what that does is that takes a look at where that 1% goes, sales tax that's recovered goes, and whether it goes to the jurisdiction in which the product is mailed or the distribution centers, which many of those are getting, many distribution center jurisdictions are getting a ton of money for that. So, that's going to go before the General Counsel in September at the general meeting. And that's all I have. SACOG and CSD 2x2, we have meetings in August.
Thank you, sir. Lights on. Thank you, sir. Was that an expansion of what they voted on last time for sales tax, you know, like for Amazon?
My, my understanding is another run at it from a different, different angle, yeah.
Okay. Very good. I was not able to attend the Citizens Groundwater Authority Meeting. Mike, Mr. Selings is our, my cohort in that matter. If there's anything of particular interest, sir?
No, there were a couple of housekeeping items and there were a couple of grant opportunities that the consultant was soliciting the board's interest to pursue or not. And the board declined those opportunities simply due to a lack of funds available for the match that was required for the grants, so.
Thank you, sir. With that, we'll move on to information and consent calendar. Is there any public comment on this item, Madam Clerk?
No public comment.
Thank you. It is recommended that items 1 through 8 be acted on simultaneously unless a separate discussion and/or action is requested by the council. How does it please the council?
I'd like to pull item F7 for a couple of quick questions. Mr. Mayor?
Okay, so we will pull item F7. And if that's the only item, we will, I am, would be looking for a motion to receive file warrants for the period ending July 6, 2023, the minutes of the regular meeting for June 20th, 2023, treasurer's report for period ending May 2023, approval of project expenditure plan, Transportation Development Act claim for fiscal year 2023-2024, water recycling funding program grant application, adoption of ordinance providing for no parking zone on a portion of Marengo Road, and 8, Old Town Water Main Replacement Project, CHIP 53 AN Engineering Service Contract Award SEQUA exemption, Section 15302 and 21080.21. Do I have a motion?
So, moved.
So, moved by Councilman Lozano, seconded by the mayor. May I have a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Farmer?
Aye.
Councilmember Lozano?
Aye.
Mayor Vandenberg?
Aye. Motion passes 3-0. Next is item F7. Subject is resolution authorizing the city manager to execute a deed restriction on city-owned parcel APN 150-0290-046-000 for Agora Aquatic Center. Mr. Farmer?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. The staff report on this seemed fairly straightforward. I, I didn't really have any initial questions, but I did have a couple citizens reach out to me today with some questions. And just for that, I felt the need to just pull it just to get clarification publicly is, what it appears to me, and I don't know if this is a question for Mr. Heinz or Mr. Solis or attorney, so please feel free, whoever, jump in. It seems to me that this is just a housekeeping item. We recently got some funding through Prop 68, but in order to do that, we have to have this sort of deed restriction. And I'm misunderstanding that deed restriction is basically just saying that we're going to continue operating said property for its current use through a certain year. I mean, is that the gist of it or?
Yeah. Councilmember, I can probably answer that question. And I've got Mr. Griffin here if there's anything further clarification. If I misspeak, you can correct me. Essentially, you know, condition of the Prop 68 grant funds from the state was, and these are recreational grant funds, so is that the, essentially the property will be used by the city for recreational purposes for that 30-year duration. So, that's essentially what the restriction is. Meaning, we couldn't sell it and somebody turn it into a commercial property or something like that. So, essentially, the state's giving us these grant funds for this recreational purpose and that we're not going to turn around at some point down the road and sell the property off or use it for something else, say, so.
So, so, I was just trying to understand why, why they would require something like that. His purpose is they just don't want to give you money and then you invest in this property, make it nice, and then pass it on to a new owner for something else or?
Correct.
Okay. And that's what, that's kind of the way I understood it. But again, just because the questions I got, I was like, you know, I just wanted to make sure I was explaining to the public correctly. And so...
It's kind of similar to the market property, if you will.
Yeah, right. Yeah. So, and this is, but this is just for the APN, I mean, that, that property is the Agora Aquatic Center, probably the parking lot, the Agora, maybe the skate park. How, how big is that plot?
Yeah, that, that parcel essentially encompasses the Parks and Rec Admin Chipola and then the, the skate park slash aquatic center area.
So, it doesn't restrict us from, you know, obviously, we use the money to do upgrades to the heaters and stuff, right? It doesn't, it doesn't restrict us from really doing anything, like if we ever wanted to upgrade the Chipola Center or anything like that in the future or any, just as long as we're still using it for parks and rec purposes, it doesn't change uses, right?
That's correct.
For recreational. Yeah, okay.
That's correct, yes.
All right. Well, that's the only question I had and I thank you for clarification.
Sure.
Councilman Farmer, can I just add that we also have the stipulation on a couple of other properties that we've gotten grants for, the Hoshville property, Walker Park. So, it's not uncommon, like you said, when they offer you money, they want to make sure that the property still is used for recreation. So, this isn't a one-off. This is what, what they do.
Okay, makes sense. Thank you, Mr. Solis. Thank you, Mr. Rand. That's all I have.
Thank you, Councilman Farmer, and thank you for bringing it up. I actually had some of the same concerns and I appreciate Armando adding that. I was, I was not aware of that. And because of where that property's, you know, situated in the city, I was a little concerned and I'm glad that this is just put in the public square. So, with that, I would be looking for a motion to adopt a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute a deed restriction on the city-owned parcel APN 150-0290-1046-Quad Zero for Agora Aquatic Center. So moved by the mayor. Do I have a second?
Second.
May I have a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Farmer?
Yes.
Councilmember Lozano?
Aye.
Mayor Vandenberg?
Aye. Motion passes 3-0. Thank you. Next is scheduled matters of notice of public hearing. First is West Side Lighting and Landscape Maintenance District. Next is scheduled matters of notice of public hearing. First is West Side Lighting and Landscape Maintenance District, 1990-02, public hearing approval, engineering report confirming the assessment diagram and assessment to levy, levied and levying annual assessment fiscal year 2023-2024. So first, we will receive the presentation.
Yeah, good evening, council. Again, Mike Selling, Public Works Director. We've got three lighting and landscape district annual assessments tonight, so I'll be making the presentations. And then we'll have a separate public hearing, I believe, I'm looking at the city attorney, for each one in between, so.
The only thing I could, would recommend, though, is you could do a presentation, open up all at the same time if you wanted, to expedite the process if the council wanted to, or you could take them one by, do three separate public hearings.
You have all the presentations ready to go, Mike?
I do, so at the council's.
Okay, so then we will do the second subject as well. Northeast Galt Landscaping and Lighting District public hearing approval and engineering report confirming the assessment diagram and assessment to levy and levying the annual assessment of fiscal year 2023-2024. And item three, the City Galt Landscaping and Lighting District number three, public hearing approving the engineering report and confirming the assessment diagram assessment and levy, levying of the annual assessment for fiscal year 2023-2024. Go ahead, sir.
Okay, well, good evening again, mayor and council members. This is the first one of the three hearings tonight for the, or the single hearing tonight for the city's lighting and landscape districts, as we often refer to them, or is LLD is the acronym. Government's always gotta have an acronym, right? So this public hearing, or this first one for the West Side Lighting and Landscaping District, is to consider levying the annual assessments for FY 22, or 2023-24. So it is recommended that first, I receive a presentation and conduct a public hearing regarding the levy of proposed assessments for the West Side Galt Lighting, Landscaping, and Maintenance District, 1990-02 for fiscal year 23-24, and related engineers' report. And then two, upon closing of the public hearing, adopt a resolution approving the West Side Galt Lighting, Landscaping, and Maintenance District, 1990-02, engineers' report and levying of the annual assessments for fiscal year 2023-24. So this map shows the West Side LLD area in the pink color. The other colors reflect different areas of the city which are in different districts, either in LLD, one of the other two potentially, or the newer version, if you will, what we call Community Facilities District 2020-1, or CFD 2020-1. And there's a legend, it's probably kind of hard to see in the lower right there, that denotes what those other districts are. So for the West Side LLD this year, there were no annexations, mergers, or subdivisions of an existing parcel. The parcel assessments have been fixed essentially since the district's formation in 1990 and cannot be changed without a special election of the district property owners. Typically, a single-family home's assessment in the district ranges from a low of $36.62 to $221.80, and that's dependent on the benefit zone in which the property or parcel is located. And for this district, there are actually 15 different zones. So because the district assessments haven't been adjusted since the inception, a general fund subsidy has historically been approved to cover the district's costs. For FY 23-24, the general fund subsidy needed to maintain current service levels is $272,070, which is about 61% of the revenue needed. For reference, the district assessments themselves, actually what's assessed on the parcels in those 3662 and 22180 ranges, is the remainder, it's about $174,000. So there's a total revenue need of about $446,000 annually. So again, mayor and council members, this concludes my presentation, and I would request, well, I guess we'll be requesting to move on to the next presentation. And once these presentations are complete, to open the public hearing, take any comments. And upon closure of the public hearing, consider adopting the resolution to continue the levy of the assessments for FY 23-24. And with that, I will move on to the next presentation, which is the Northeast Galt Lighting and Landscaping District. Again, basically, the recommendation is to receive this presentation, conduct the public hearing regarding the levy of the proposed assessments for the Northeast Galt Lighting, Landscaping and Lighting District for fiscal year 2023-24 and the related engineers' report. Number two, upon closing of the public hearing, adopt a resolution approving the Northeast Galt Landscaping and Lighting District engineers' report and levying of the annual assessments for fiscal year 2023-24. And for this one, the map, basically, the area in yellow is the Northeast Lighting and Landscaping District. There are a couple of green portions you'll note in there. Those are portions that have been annexed out into Community Facilities District 2020-1. And particularly, you may recall, well, the areas there near Carillion and Walnut, kind of the two green areas in the middle near each other, that is Veranda Estates and Parlin Oaks respectively. And then down toward the bottom is the Dry Creek, no, that's Dry Creek Oaks. Is this Cedar Flats? Apologies. I'm glad my deputy is here to correct me. So that's the map. For the Northeast on this year, again, no annexations, no de-annexations. As noted, the Veranda and Parlin were previously de-annexed, and then no parcel subdivisions either. Again, the parcels have been fixed since 1990 when it was formed and can't be changed without a special election of the property owners. Typically, a single-family home's assessment in this district ranges from a low of $51.70 to a high of $301.85, and again, dependent on the benefit zone. And for this district, there are 14 different benefit zones. Because, again, the district assessments haven't been adjusted since that inception, a general fund subsidy has historically been approved to cover the district's costs. And for fiscal year 2023-24, the general fund subsidy needed to maintain current service levels is $984,585, and that's about 68% of the revenue needed. For reference, the district assessments generate the remainder, about $472,000 of the about $1.45 million total. So again, the recommendation is to complete this presentation, and then collectively, we'll open a public hearing for all three, take any comments respectively for each district. And upon closing of that public hearing, consider adopting a resolution to continue to levy the assessments for fiscal year 23-24. And with that, I will move on to the third. And again, for this district, Lighting and Landscape District number three, the recommendation is to first receive the presentation, and we'll do the collective public hearing on the proposed assessments for the City of Galt Landscaping and Lighting District number three, just for clarity there, for fiscal year 2023-24, and the associated engineers' report. And number two, upon closing of the public hearing, adopt a resolution approving the City of Galt Landscaping and Lighting District number three engineers' report and levying of the annual assessments for fiscal year 2023-24. And again, the map here is showing the LLD number three in blue, so those areas in blue that are kind of scattered out, that is the LLD number three areas. And so again, for this district, there were no annexations or subdivisions of any existing parcels, no de-annexations. The assessments per parcel, this one is different. I want to kind of pause here. This district actually does have, allow for a CPI or Consumer Price Index annual adjustment. There's a minimum adjustment of 1.5%, and obviously, if it's higher, you can go higher. So the CPI index for this past year, which we always go the previous year on these adjustments, was a 6.3%. And that's what we'll be using for the FY 23-24 adjustments. The proposed assessment for a single-family residence parcel, these are all the same. There is no range in this district, and that's $403.71. And just for reference, that's just about a $24 increase from last year's assessment. So for fiscal year 23-24, expenditures are projected to exceed revenues similar to the other two. And in this district, it's just under $153,000, and that will eliminate the remaining reserves. This district has had a small, you know, balance that's been carrying forward, but it's basically been whittling down year over year. So this is basically where that balance ends, and so there will be no more balance to assist with the annual cost, to address the annual costs. So again, it will require a general fund or possibly Measure Q subsidy in that amount. You know, I'm just gonna let you know on the percentages here, I made a note. That 153,000 about, that's about 41% of the revenues needed. The remainder is basically split out, about 85,000 is the fund balance that'll be essentially taken out. And then the actual assessments generate about 125,000, so. And with that, again, the recommendation after the presentation is to open a public hearing for this Lighting and Landscape District number three, along with the other two. It's engineers' report, and take any comments that there may be, and consider, well, close the public hearing and then consider adopting a resolution to continue the annual assessments for fiscal year 23-24 for LLD number three. And with that, I will stop.
Thank you, sir. And with that, we will open the public hearing. Is there any public comment on this item, or any of these three items?
No public comment.
Does the council have any questions, concerns, or curiosities?
I have a question. Mr. Selling, just out of curiosity, I was looking at this map, and I think this caught my eye last time. I was just curious, a lot of, as people that don't know, there's a lot of the older part of town that's not in a lighting and landscape district. A huge part, right? But then, I guess, at a certain point, anything that was built beyond a certain year, I guess, would be, would fell into something. Why is it that on LL three, down here in the Creekside neighborhood, we have three of the very newest areas, it seems, that are highlighted in blue? There's those three blue areas, which are in LLD three. And then we have the pink area, which encompasses like Lariot Loop, for example, and all that kind of area, is part of the West Side. But then we have this whole little carve-out down here that's not in one. Is that, I mean, why is, is that because that was built before the?
Yeah, it's essentially a timing issue, council member. Basically, the pink or the West Side District, that was in 1990. And I think when LLD three came in, I think it was two years later, if I'm not mistaken. And that's why it has a CPI adjustment, and the others don't. I think that that was probably something that was realized early on with these lighting and landscape districts, the potential for, you know, them to essentially get frozen in terms of the assessments, so.
So that little uncolored area, which is basically pretty much kind of corral place, it looks like that cul-de-sac, part of Ranch Road and Chisholm Bridle Path, that was all prior to 1990?
Correct. It probably was. I'd have to verify that, but.
Because I don't remember that being there during that era. That's why I was just curious. If it has to be, I just probably don't remember the.
Yeah, we'd have to research it. I obviously haven't been around that long, but, yeah, we'd have to check and see if that was the case or why that wasn't.
Just curious. Maybe you could just let me know later on.
Sure.
I'm just curious for just knowledge, so. Thank you.
Sure.
Mr. Lozano?
No questions. I just have a comment, and I seem to say this every year for, and have for the last at least 12 years since I've been dealing with these. Is there, I think we need to look at whether there's an advantage to revamping these zones in terms of how the tax is collected, and because lighting and landscape districts, for the most part, are a broken system, and it was, my understanding, it was a response to Prop 13. And so, we have these clunky kind of zones that only collect a certain amount per year. One of them has a CPI adjustment. So for instance, our people in Lighting and Landscape District three are gonna be, being charged 24 more dollars a year, while, let's say, the Northeast Landscaping area will still continue to pay about $99.44 a year. And so I think that as we move forward, we need to look at the advantages of either consolidating these into something else that is different or potentially doing away with them altogether. Now, I recognize they're a source of income, but I would also say that from an equity perspective, in terms of our residents here in this city, it isn't an equitable distribution, I don't believe. And so, so anyhow, again, not something, a hill that I would die on, but I think that as we move forward, we really need to take a look at these and maybe see what other jurisdictions have done in this regard, so. That's all I have to say about.
I actually just would say that I do support that, that, at least looking at what that would look like. I know we've talked about this in the past, but maybe just at some point, we could, staff could bring to the council, what would be the alternative options? What would those look like financially? What could we do? What would the legwork, what would the process look like for doing like a citywide CFD? You know, as far as how many votes and who would have to prove that? What would just getting rid of them, what would the financial impact of that be? I mean, we could do some quick math, but I would support what Mr. Lozano said because like, for example, I mean, I don't live in a lighting and landscape district. I don't think that's fair that I don't pay anything whenever, when other people do. And I don't think it's fair that you have certain people that are paying an increase because of the CPI and others are not. So, yeah, I would support staff bringing that back. I don't know if Mr., if the mayor would support that as well. There's three of us here, but.
Well, you know, I mean, getting rid of it seems financially, some serious financial trouble for the city. But the problem is you're asking everybody to, the opposite, you know, you're asking everybody to tax themselves, and they're not likely to vote yes on that. And I thought about this, but my only personal thought, and I don't know if it's legal, is that if you were to pass, and we're also, you know, you can't add another Measure Q because we're tapped out at this point. So there's no way to, you know, have a general tax to cover that unless you want to accept that Measure Q would do it all. And I personally don't know that that would be wise, but if you could put something on the ballot that would allow each home to be added into a new district only after the sale, so the new homeowner, in a stipulation to purchase the home, would have to agree to a lighting, to be entered into a lighting and landscaping district. It may take many years, but it's a way of doing everything all at one time while not asking the existing owner to levy a 400 additional dollar tax on himself. So I don't know if that's legally viable, but.
Yeah, you would, you'd have to set up some version of a citywide CFD, or you would, you'd have to create a new CFD because you would have new terms as far as how that would go into effect. I've never seen a CFD that worked that way, so I'm skeptical, but I'm not gonna say no. I mean, if it's something that the council was serious at, we'd take a look at. I just know, obviously, whenever you're gonna do it, any kind of taxing district, whether it's a CFD or LLD, it's gonna be difficult, obviously, to get the votes for the existing built environment. But maybe, you know, there are cities that do parcel taxes, that they have taxes that happen every time there's a turnover on property. So it's not necessarily tied to CFD, but maybe those funds could be used for it. That's, you know, typically when they want. That's, you know, typically when they want something to go into effect upon the sale, that's typically what they look at. So there are things you could do to impose some kind of tax on the sale of property, but.
Well, then I would be interested in support that in the, with the general sense that I put forth. Part of my concern about that is that, you know, you have people come up here and complain about their fixed income, and they're getting their rents raised by, you know, almost the maximum allowed by the law, and they get, you know, $200 from the government as a cost of living increase, and then they get 130 of it taken away from them for rent, so it, yeah, I want to kind of, I don't want to be the guy that sticks it to them, you know, it just seems extremely unfair as it is. So I guess we all agree in some respects, but it's, I don't know if that's defined enough for the legal requirements here?
Well, again, I just want to be clear, what I'm supporting, suggesting is, I'm not supporting any specific doing a citywide CFD or getting rid of whatever. I'm just simply suggesting that I support what Mr. Lozano says, that we want staff to come back and say, what are the options and what do they look like? And then we can discuss it more at that point.
Agreed. I just, as a person running the meeting, I just want to make sure I touch that base.
Yeah, yeah, no, everything we have all said makes very much sense, yeah.
And I would just make one last comment. I don't want to drag this thing out, because it's, we have to, we have to move forward with it. But I will say that I don't have necessarily an interest in turning away the revenue, but I think having it come in in a different fashion might be, might be a better way to move forward, so. That's it. I, it's, I mean, it collects about 53% of the need for that. And again, I did quick math, but, so it's about a little over half. You know, the revenue is important, but I think just kind of the way it's set up and the inequity in, for our citizens, so, that's it.
Just, and one last thing, you know, this, this council, three of us have been part of, and the members that are not here, have been a part of what I call a lot of housekeeping since I've been in my turn, right? This is one that's definitely, I mean, it's, like you said, broken system. We can't just keep going on and just keep doing this every year. We need to do some housekeeping on this, I think, so. Thank you tonight for your presentation, Mike.
Yeah.
So is that clear, Smud?
Yeah, I think so.
Absolutely. Thank you very much. So with that, I would be looking for, adopt a resolution approving the west side, west side Galt Lighting and Landscape Maintenance District 1990-2 Engineering Report and levying the annual assessment for fiscal year 2023. Adopt a resolution approving the northeast Galt Lighting and Landscaping District Engineer Report levying annual assessment for fiscal year 2023-24, and adopting a resolution approving the City of Galt's Landing and Landscaping District Number Three Engineering Report levying an annual assessment on fiscal year 2023-2024. Do I have a motion? So moved by the Councilman Lozano, seconded by the mayor. May I have a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Farmer?
Aye.
Councilmember Lozano?
Aye.
Mayor Vandenberg?
Aye. Motion passes three zero. Thank you, gentlemen. Thank you, Mr. Sillings. Now on to regular calendar. So, City Council Office, subject is Measure R Independent Citizens Oversight Committee Appointments.
So, the recommendation is review applications and consider appointments to the vacant positions on the Measure R Independent Citizens Oversight Committee. The Measure R Independent Citizens Oversight Committee has three vacancies appointed by the entire city council with terms ending April 2026. We advertise the vacancies in the local newspaper, on the city's website, and social media. One application for reappointment has been received by Glennis Nelson, and an application from Marcia Mooney and Paul Harvey have been received, both of whom meet the required qualifications. Again, this is the city council appointment, so a motion will be needed, and I don't, I don't see anyone in the, are you Mr. Harvey? Okay, I don't see any members.
Okay, so there's, there's.
That the applications were attached, so.
Okay, so there's no one, none of the applicants are here to speak, and does this require public comment? Is there any public comment?
No public comment.
Okay, with that, do I have a motion from the council members or a statement?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to approve all, to recommend that we approve all three. I do know two of the members, the new members that have applied, or applicants, I should say, and I think they would be great choices to serve. So I'll move that we approve all three.
Mr. Farmer?
Yeah, and I'll second that, also with the comment of, appreciate the applicants, and thank you to Ms. Nelson for replying, so.
Thank you, sir. With that, may I have a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Farmer?
Yes.
Councilmember Lozano?
Aye.
Mayor Vandenberg?
Aye. Motion passes three zero. Thank you for showing an increased interest, people. Next is Communication. City Clerks, is there any communications?
None this evening.
All right, thank you. City Clerks Report, subject, City Council Meeting of August 1st, 2023.
So, due to National Night Out, which is on August 1st, 2023, to accommodate the attendance of City Council at the National Night Out events, staff is recommending an earlier start time of 3:00 PM for the regular scheduled City Council meeting, which is the time we've changed it to in the past.
Is there any objections? Need a motion yet? Do I have a, I have so moved to accept 3:00 PM as the start time for August 1st, 2023. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second, my Councilman Lozano may have a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Farmer?
Aye.
Councilmember Lozano?
Aye.
Mayor Vandenberg?
Aye. Motion passes three zero. Next is League of California Cities Conference Delegation of Voting Delegate Report, Ms. Hubbard.
So, the recommendation is appoint a City Council Member Voting Delegate and up to two alternates, if desired, at the League of California Cities Annual Conference and Expo September 20th through September 22nd, 2023. This year's resolutions to be voted on are not ready at this time. However, the League should be providing this information by the end of July, which I will be providing to City Council once received. Councilmember Lozano has already requested to attend the conference, and City Council may choose to appoint Councilmember Lozano as a voting delegate. The cost for a member city to attend the League is, for the full three days, is $650. The cost to attend just the Friday conference is $350. There are sufficient funds in the council budget to send one council member. However, appointing alternate members are not budgeted at this time.
So even though it's, sorry, it's recommended to have an alternate if we do that?
You can choose if you want. In the past, we have not done an alternate.
Right, but it would cost, right? Okay, so I propose that, well, I actually have a question. Mr. Lozano, in our reports from City Council, you mentioned an item that is going to be there or potentially, so it's just not official yet?
Yeah, it will be there. Revenue and Taxation Committee is one of, I believe, five policy committees, and so that will be one of two resolutions that I believe are going to move forward to the voting body, so. Along with public safety and community service and all that. I would add that I did get a call today from the President of Cal Cities, Ali Taj, who's a council member down in Artesia, and asking me to be a part of the Resolutions Committee, which will vet all of the resolutions coming into the full, full membership. So I told him that I'd be willing to do that. So not only will those two that I mentioned earlier, I'll be able to look at, but it appears the balance.
Thank you, sir. I move to select Mr. Lozano as our representative. Mr. Farmer?
If Mr. Lozano is fine doing that, then I second that motion.
That's a first and a second. May I have a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Farmer?
Yes.
Councilmember Lozano?
Aye.
Mayor Vandenberg?
Yes, and we will not have a motion for a backup. Just, that need doesn't, no, no vote or nothing, just want to make it out, okay. So with that, is communication by staff?
No communications from myself or most of the directors. We do have one communication from Parks and Recreation Director Armando Solis.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. I just wanted to take this time to thank a couple of people for our Independence Day celebration. This is the first meeting we've had since then, and I'd like to thank the continued support of Cal Waste, SMUD, and Best Western as sponsors, including the Galt Herald and Galt Sign and Graphics. They continue to support this event and help us put on something very special for this town. Now to Departments, the Police Department with the Traffic Control, Public Works, and getting the roads blocked, incredible job working together. The Aquatic Center staffing for the fireworks in the pool, Market Staffing, basically doing everything from the Saturday market to the parade to the run, and our Parks Division getting everything ready and prepared for that event. They did an incredible job. It was hot, long hours, and I want to thank them and show my appreciation to all of them.
Mr. Mayor, that concludes staff comments.
Thank you, sir. Next is comments by City Council Members Agenda and Future Agenda Items. Councilman Farmer?
Wasn't ready to go first. Just that I want to thank Parks and Rec and Public Works, Cal PD, everybody that was involved at the IDC, it was, it was obviously a fabulous event. Every year I hear people say that they think it was larger than last. I mean, it does seem that way every time when you're in the parade and see how many people, you're just like, wow, and it's kind of, kind of shocks you each time, so I would like to believe that it's, that it's getting better in every year, and I know that wouldn't be possible if it wasn't for all the hard work of all the people to make that happen from, like Mr. Solis said, road closures, to the people that actually plan the event, coordinating all of it. It's a, it's a big endeavor. It really is the, I feel like is the premier event that Galt has every year. And, you know, the Fourth of July is the American holiday, so what better than to do is celebrate huge with a big town? I just want to make a comment that the guys that come with the military vehicles made a comment to me that they, that they do a lot of these kinds of things in other towns, and they're always shocked at how huge the turnout is for Galt, being a small town. So, kind of made me feel pretty good, and I just want to pass along for, to, you know, those that made all that happen. Other than that, just that I want to thank the Police Department and Mr. Heinz for the press statement regarding the burglaries, and I want to thank the PD for your hard work on that. I know you guys are out there pounding the pavement very hard right now, and I'm confident you guys are going to get to the bottom of this. So I just ask the community to be vigilant and be patient, and, you know, see something, say something, and, you know, share any information you have, and it's going to take a community to do this, to get to the bottom of this. So, other than that, I don't have anything else, Mr. Mayor. That'll conclude my comments for tonight.
Thank you, sir. Councilman Lozano?
Yeah, I won't repeat everything that was already said, but great job on the IDC and that whole day. Jackie was out there running around like crazy, and so please pass on our thanks to her, or my thanks to her. I did want to mention that this Friday, I'll be attending the Sacramento Valley Division of Cal Cities meeting in Lincoln. It's a quarterly meeting that rotates around, and so I'll, I'll report back out on that. And I think that's all I have. Thanks.
Thank you, sir. Fourth of July parade, I thoroughly enjoyed myself. I received a similar comment from the people with the military vehicles that they always enjoy coming to Galt over many other venues. I think Jackie did a wonderful job being thrust into the position of authority. She handled herself like a professional under a barrage of questions and, I guess what would be awkward moments. She did a great job. Now, I'm just curious, because I actually, after the parade, I had to go to work that day, drive to Sassoon City, so I'm curious if anyone can tell me how the market went that day, because both are going on simultaneously.
From what I was told due to the heat, it was probably done around 11 o'clock, 11, by 12 o'clock it was pretty much over, but it goes until 2:00.
Well, that's pretty understandable, all things considered. Okay.
I think it was actually, I think it was better than what I expected it to be with the heat, though, honestly. I thought it'd be much worse because it was so hot, but it was still a really good turnout, so, yeah.
Very good. And I also wanted to thank the PD and the city staff in general for the responses to my questions. It's a, it's a tough situation, so I appreciate the continued effort. And with that, we'll end the meeting at 7:25 PM.